Welcome to the November twentieth, twenty twenty-three meeting, Surrey County Board of Commissioners. Good to see you tonight. We'll get right into our agenda here. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order and ask Commissioner Larry Johnson to deliver our invocation and our pledge. Do you would please stand?
Our heavenly Father, good time to be in prayer this evening. We are gratitude to thee for all of our blessings that we have. And help us all to remember that we should count our blessings each and every day. Father, we're thankful for the time that we have to spend this evening, this meeting. Thankful for those that are present, thankful for our safety, just not. Pray that as we discuss and even decide things that are pertinent to Surrey County. That it will be done so with a thoroughness and genuine wit and wisdom and not. We pray for all of our people who wear us a uniform. Take our freedoms, take their agency, take their property and our lives. Father, we ask special blessing be upon those who are fighting the fair, fair account, fair account mounting this day. They all can be protected in their duties. We're thankful that forecast calls for rain, which we're greatly thankful for and that we need. We pray for those who are less fortunate, those are, those that are hungry, those that are ill. Those that are dealing with infirmities, we ask and pray that everyone can endure their trials and tribulations in this life. Again, we thank thee for thy love and we ask and pray for these things in Jesus' name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public who wishes to have. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, gentlemen, you have your agenda for tonight's meeting. What is your pleasure?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve tonight's agenda from Commissioner Goins. Have a second? Second, Commissioner Marion, any discussion? All those in favor, aye? Opposed, the ayes have it? Okay, you also have the meeting minutes from the sixth of November. What is your pleasure?
Motion to approve the meeting minutes of November the sixth, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion, Commissioner Tucker, to approve the meeting minutes from sixth of November. Do you have a second? Second, Commissioner Goins, any discussion? All those in favor, aye? Opposed, the ayes have it? Okay, call on County Manager this time for the consent agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Relatively short, just two items. First are the tax department end of month summaries, charges and reports. Final item is from the MIS department. We are in need of additional licenses for the network for Microsoft and that concludes the consent agenda.
All right, gentlemen, there you have it. What is your pleasure?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Have a motion, Commissioner Marion, to approve tonight's consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Johnson, any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it and the consent is approved. This time, we have special recognition for Ms. Susan Miles and Mark Willis. You would come down?
Okay, this certificate for you, Ms. Susan Miles. It is hereby presented. Since May of two thousand and twenty-two, Ms. Susan Miles voluntarily supported the Surrey County Substance Abuse Recovery Transportation Program. For the past eighteen months, Ms. Miles worked tirelessly to ensure that the five vehicles utilized by the SCO SAR transportation program were maintained to a high degree of cleanliness and sanitation, which was exceptionally important to the transportation program and their clients during the COVID-nineteen pandemic. The transportation program drivers were greatly appreciative of the time Ms. Miles saved them prior to a day's work. Clients of the program frequently commented, commented on the cleanliness of the vehicles in which they were passengers. How do you, that acronym, do you call it by name or do you call it by the acronym? SCOSAR. The SCOSAR director and the transportation staff extend their sincerest gratitude and heartfelt thanks for the dedication to the duty exhibited by Biz Miles. Her personal sacrifice was an essential element to the professional reputation of the Surrey County Transportation Program, which has now become a model for other counties. And so this award and certificate is presented to you on this twentieth day of November, two thousand and twenty-three, with the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Eddie Harris, Chairman Van Tucker, Bill Goins, Larry Johnson and Mark Marion, and congratulations.
Thank you.
And we thank you very much.
Would you like to comment?
Thank you for giving me this great opportunity to volunteer. It really, it makes me feel good and I really, I'm happy that, you know, I can do this. So, thank you again. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mark Willis. Terry, yes. Terry, would you like to come up as well? No? Okay. We're recognizing the boss, so we want the big boss up here as well. So, yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, hey, I know how that works for sure. Yeah. All right, Mark. This is a proclamation in your honor, recognizing you from the county of Surrey. And I'll read it here. I'm not so sure that this does justice to what you've done here in Surrey County over the last four, five years, five years. And we're certainly honored to do this tonight. And it's been a joy getting to know you and it's a great pleasure to recognize you for your service. Whereas on the twenty-fifth of May, two thousand and eighteen, Mark Willis was hired as Surrey County's first opioid response director. And whereas on June eighth, two thousand and eighteen, Mark Willis formed the Opioid Response Advisory Council, consisting of members from twenty county and state agencies, including medical and mental health professionals, law enforcement, court systems and public school systems, who each provided leadership, strategic planning and collaboration for the county's opioid response efforts. And whereas in two thousand and nineteen, Mark Willis was the recipient of the first Bureau of Justice Assistant Grant for Surrey County to support local transportation and data collection efforts supporting substance use recovery. And whereas on the first of November, two thousand and twenty, the opioid response department was renamed the Surrey County Substance Abuse Recovery Department led by Director Mark Willis. And whereas in two thousand and twenty-three, the Association for North Carolina Boards of Health selected Mark Willis as the recipient of the Robert Ed Struther Award for fostering partnerships and contributions to public health. And whereas Mark Willis served as a countywide resource coordinating and building services, programs and resources to combat the county's substance abuse problem. And whereas Mark Willis served as an original pioneer in North Carolina local government to evaluate and respond to the impact of the opioid crisis at a local level. Excuse me. And now for be it resolved that the Surrey County Board of Commissioners recognizes Mark Willis for his hard work and persistence, the honor bestowed and the outstanding contributions and meaningful outcomes he has achieved for Surrey County residents and their families. Adopted this twenty day of, twentieth day of November, two thousand and twenty-three by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Eddie Harris, Chairman Van Tucker, Vice Chairman, Bill Goins, Larry Johnson and Mark Marion. Congratulations, Mark.
Thanks, sir.
Will say something?
Yeah. Really, whatever was accomplished and what has been accomplished by this office is really the, the due to the support primarily of the gentlemen that are up here. Because I've said many times in public that unconventional problems require unconventional solutions and they take unconventional leaders that are willing to, to risk being different and trying different things. And that's what these gentlemen did. They were out ahead of what was going on in the rest of the state. And what is now conventional was unconventional five years ago. And I also commend and could have, although I take credit for, I commend the people that are in my office. None of what was accomplished could be done without them because they're the ones that go out every day and work in the street. And they, they suffer through the misery that is addiction every day and I thank them sincerely for it. I checked on this today. The intervention team as of the end of October has connected four hundred and sixty-three residents to some form of a service or treatment. The transportation team has now traveled over a hundred and seventeen thousand miles inside Surrey County and transported three thousand four hundred and fifty trips, connecting people to treatment and court and probation and task and medical appointments. A recovery to work program has recruited fifty businesses in this county that are willing to work with our intervention team and our reentry team. And our community outreach coordinator has done over four hundred presentations and reached over thirty thousand residents for a prevention effort. And volunteers like Ms. Miles has, has kept the grease on, on the wheels. So, all of that is not due to me. It's due to the team and I thank them for that.
Bring your folks up here for a picture?
Sure.
Yep. Ms. Miles and the, the office. You are here, please come up here, we'll take a picture. Yeah, come on, get up here. Yeah, yeah. Mr. Eads, he'll attend as well. Part of the genesis of this program?
Thank you. We appreciate you letting us borrow.
I hope he, you know. This time, we'll do our open forum portion of our meeting tonight. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak on any topic of concern to the County Board of Commissioners or the citizens of Surrey County, we will open up, so come right along. Insert your name and your telephone number.
You'll probably remember me, I'm guessing. My name's Danny Stanley. Phone number three, three, six, seven, five, five, zero, six, eight, zero. I'm not going to take but just a second. Still from Mr. Willis, we've got an unconventional problem. It's not something that everybody has. I don't, I doubt you've ever had been approached from anybody else that's fixing to have a road collapse, but we are. And I'd like to ask you for help. Just thirty-two hundred dollars will buy the pipe. If you could get the pipe for us, I'll even go get it. That's, that's not delivered. That's, that's price of the pipe picked up. I'll go get it and then when the road collapses, I'll see to it it's put in if I even have to pay for it myself. That's all I've got to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stanley. All right, this time I'll call on Marty Needham, our Developmental Services Director for a rezoning.
Good evening, gentlemen. This is case number ZCR one, two, three, four. Applicant is Mark Green. The proposal is a request for a straight rezoning on the two parcels identified as four, nine, five, three, zero, one, one, eight, eight, zero, four, eight, four, nine, five, three, zero, one, one, eight, eight, two, zero, seven. Current zoning on the property is RR, restricted residential. Proposed zoning is highway business HB. Property is an open area, low to medium residential density, along with several rural businesses and highway businesses within close proximity to the parcel. Has direct road frontage on US twenty-one. It's within a mixed residential area of the twenty-fourty land use plan. Staff communicated via phone with applicant in September twenty-three. Highway business was requested by the applicant. Staff would just remind the board that all uses would be considered if allowed and approved. Planning board heard the case on November thirteenth, recommended approval. There was no opposition. Now answer any questions if you have.
All right. Thank you, Marty. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward to speak to a rezoning, ZCR one, two, three, four on US twenty-one. It's State Road, North Carolina. Please do so at this time. All right, no one to speak to the rezoning. I'll close the public hearing. And gentlemen, I'll open up to the County Board of Commissioners for discussion.
Chairman, this sounds like it's gone through its proper steps. This is your neck of the woods. What's your comments?
Well, I think that it's probably in order. I don't have a problem with rezoning this property from RR to HB. I think it fits the twenty-fourty land use plan. There are numerous small businesses in that location. I, I just really don't see a problem with it. I think it fits for the development in that area. I will say though that going forward that I think the county needs to be careful about. Well, this is speaking to billboards and most folks know my position on billboards. This property is going to HB, which is eligible for a conditional use permit for a billboard. But in this particular case, there's already a billboard on an adjacent property there right next door. So it, it wouldn't meet the two thousand feet ordinance requirement for a billboard. And so I don't know that the billboard thing is an issue for me, but going forward, a proliferation of billboards up and down US twenty-one don't excite me, but that's neither here than there for this rezoning. So I'm going to support it. I think it's everything I can see that it's in order. Okay. All right, so I'll make a motion to rezone. What, yeah, a statement of consistency, Ed. Okay, do you have anything to speak to on this, Ed? Okay, all right, we're good?
Good, all in one motion.
Yeah, you have to work through the statement first or?
Okay, Marty, you have anything to add to this rezoning? Okay. All right, so we're doing the consistency and the rezoning all in one motion. Is that correct? Okay, all right, I'll make a motion to adopt the statement of consistency and rezone all in one motion. Do I have a second? Second, Commissioner Goins, any discussion, gentlemen? All those in favor, aye? Opposed, the ayes have it and the property is rezoned. Okay. Dr. Kim Morrison.
Mr. Temple, Ms. Hart.
I'm sorry, Jay. Okay, all right, we'll scoot you on down. We, we'll get to you later. That's fine. No worries. Mr. Keith Cogger. Lead Building Inspector.
Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for allowing me to come back. Since the last meeting, you asked us to clear up and soften up some letters, which I have done so and resubmitted them for your approval. Also, other, you want us to find other ways to educate the community about what we're doing and what we're looking for. Our departments have been working very hard on that, which I've also submitted in your packet as well. Some things that when people come in, if they're not compliant or if they're just asking questions, that kind of information is given out to them. We also list of definitions and things of that nature to clarify how the state looks at certain buildings. Accessory buildings, farm buildings, it draws that all out. So when people come in to get their permits, this is given to them and their questions are answered right there as much as they can. There's other things in here. There's things about the setic system with, you know, David Brown could speak to that. But there, the whole process, once again, trying to be the one stop process to, to help everyone out. Another thing, when it comes to confusion, the bona fide farms and other confusion thing, that it's new and, well, it's not new, but it's just gives a lot of gray area and a lot of people get confused with that. So we, we've got that information as there well. So we can help those with the bona fide situation. Last time we were here, was asked about the short-term rentals. Tax has flagged a hundred and forty short-term rentals in Surrey County that we have not been able to see those yet. When it comes to those hundred and forty, some of them are existing homes. I could, existing homes, we're not too worried about those. Somebody's been living in them. It's fine. It's the tobacco barns been sitting there for forty years. We're going to turn it into a Airbnb or a metal building or something of that nature. Those are the things we're worried about. Where one's been or even not just the Airbnb, it's a change of view. So you bought an accessory building, now they got a business running out of it. It, it's things of that nature that, that changes what we were looking for. Since the last meeting and, and the articles, we've had several people come in to get permits because they just didn't know. And, you know, that's the whole point. We're not changing anything we're doing right now. All we're asking is that one step to get to ten percent. The ninety percent, when we notify them, they don't know. They're coming in, they're doing what they want to do to get it right. It's the ten percent that just want to do whatever they want to do and see how long they can go. That's what this extra step of the penalty that we're asking for. We've given them two to four weeks to come in without penalty. That's very lenient compared to what the state gives us the right to do in our neighboring counties. We want to help people. We really do. This is things we're gonna have to do. Also, received the letter from a concerned citizen that had saw our meeting and also that's also was given to your packet. I got it today, but I thought you needed to see it. Citizens are concerned about it as well, too. He gave us four properties that are going on right now without permits. Because he, he wants his neighborhood right, too. So I thank you for your time. I thank you for allowing us back and your consideration with this.
Thank you, Keith. Chris, you want to add? I know you and I had a discussion today about the implications of the state and its application to this in regards to how we are bound by state law and, and the tax component of it and the overlays and how these properties are located.
Yeah, I'll just expand on that a little bit. I mentioned it last meeting, but typically the tax department on new construction, new value that's brought in the county, one of their indicators for discovering that is the building permits they receive, the COs they receive, and they go out and establish value and add it to the tax card. Now, the way that works, it still works that way, but with technology, each year, counties have counties have the resources to, through mapping, to find discrepancies from one year to the next. If you add a deck, you add a room, you convert something over, software identifies that automatically. And the taxes have to do a lot less work to determine where those are. They can easily determine what's permitted and what is not. And that's the list that tax ends up sending to inspections to say, here's a lot of improvements that weren't taxed last year that existed. They were assigned no value because we didn't know about them. And then they're fixing it on their end going forward, and then they're sending this list to the inspections department to have them look into it as well for possible building code violations. So, you know, it may have been 10 years ago, you could add a deck, you could add a room, and nobody would ever be the wiser until you sold the property. But nowadays, you really can't get away with it for more than a year. And it can be far more expensive for you to fix it after your cost than to just follow the permitting process initially. So I was just gonna, I mentioned that briefly, but that's basically a little more specificity about today's technology and the ability of tax departments to discover these that were not permitted relatively quickly when you're talking about 12 months, that's a quick turnaround.
Are you talking about like an aerial picture perhaps that would show an expansion or a new roof or a new wing or a new back porch? Out of these 140 rentals that's been identified, Keith, Mr. Cogger, how many of these roughly are in existing homes that are totally currently and have been for a while occupied versus how many of them are new model tobacco barns and new structures that has been identified? I mean, that's a big difference to me. You know, if 100 of them is where somebody lives and they rent their house out every weekend, that's one thing to me. If, 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 on the other hand, 100 plus of them are brand-new structures or tobacco barns that's been remodeled that people are living in and we expect to that when they come, they come safely and it has smoke detectors and it has bathrooms with proper water and the ability to dispense waste and that's another thing to me. So do you have any idea of those 140 structures you're talking about?
No, sir. We have not looked at that list yet. We just been given, we haven't had really time to sit down because we've kind of been told to put on hold. So we just kind of put, we've got plenty else going on, but when we're we will check into it and find out what they are. We will, we will work together as the four departments, as we always do, to find out the ones that are necessary, we need to take care of or check into and see what's going on.
Would you, how many of these would you say are generated by the tax department as opposed to maybe whistleblowers or what have you? Or the vast majority of them generated by the tax department?
With these, with these short-term rentals, I will say it's mostly through the tax. But we're finding other things as well, like environmental health has found pools being built without permits because they're going out there for something else and then it notifies us about pools. We find that buildings being built as we go down the road, looking to another inspection. I mean, it's a little bit of everything. Like I said, the four departments are working and talking together and that's where we're getting all our information from.
Oh, it's safe to say we're not chasing HVAC trucks and cement trucks and and throw our, you know, throw everything else down and follow to see, we're not quite that aggressive.
No, we're running around 50, 60 inspections a day with five inspectors. We don't have time to be just riding around looking for stuff. A lot of us are complaint driven. We get complaints a lot, too. So we're not chasing people, I promise you that. We're not doing anything different than we're doing any of what we've done in the past couple of years. What Chris was talking about, the new software, that's what's really changed everything in what we're doing right now. Because we're getting more and more and more of this from the tax.
One other thing, you know, get on here. Last time we talked about, and we didn't talk about this except I heard you say in the last meeting, I believe, on this topic, we, and you heretofore formerly came from Forsyth County, working as an inspector out there, Inspector out there, Inspections Department. But I noticed on there, we looked in to see what our other neighboring partnering counties were doing. Some contiguous to us and others nearby that's comparable to us. And I noticed it's a whole new different animal down there, of course, in Forsyth County, but it was quite interesting to me that when the question was, what does Stokes do, what does Yakin do, what does Ash Allegheny, Suri do? The one on what does Forsyth do when we found these same violators out about turning off the power, I noticed the answer on there was they don't necessarily do anything. Is that, did I misread that?
No, they don't. They don't have, Winston's a different government down there. So yes, they basically threaten utilities and they will turn utilities and that's basically what, a lot of times that that's the nuclear option. A lot of time that gets people's attention real quick. But that is something I want to avoid up here. I don't want to do that. And that's why I want to try to find something else before we have to go to that.
But right now, we actually do take those measures occasionally.
Yeah.
But Forsyth doesn't. How does Forsyth, a county like Forsyth, get away with not turning off power after they go through all the things that you have to go to through here to get people's attention?
That is a very good question I can't answer, too. At that time, I was just a building inspector and didn't, there was people above me that handled that stuff, so I can't really answer how that was done.
Keith, I have a question for you. You've done said how many inspections you go through a day? And you only have so much help? And you're going out and with four different divisions, help and zoning, all this, and y'all going out together. I think you said try to go do it once a week. Is that what you're trying to do?
Right, it was, we're planning because it started off with the campers. And every Wednesday from 12 on, the four departments would come together to do with the campers with the new proposal of that. Now, we've caught up with most of the campers and we're done. And that's where the Airbnbs and the short terms and the other complaints have come into effect. So we're kind of transitioning into these other complaints and stuff now. And again, with, everybody's very busy. So Wednesday at 12 is the best time for the four departments to kind of plan to make that. And then really, again, you only have a short amount of time, so you can't drive across the county. You're gonna have to hit an area at a time and just kind of work. So we're not picking on one area. We're making rounds, excuse me, but it's just how it's going.
Well, you mentioned your short time and everything. Is there, I know that such as collecting our property taxes in the county only have so long, I think it's 10 years, and after 10 years, we don't, we don't have that authority anymore. Is there any such timeframe in these inspections or people that you're saying 10% don't give a hoot? 90% is trying to, you know, that's your statement. Is there, is there some type of, I don't know, what do you call it, statute of limitations or something pertaining to timeframe? If somebody, you know, doesn't comply or is there a time that, I mean, can you go back however long you want to or what? I'm just curious.
Well, I think what happens, if someone gets a permit and it does not close out and it stays unclosed, or there's violations that never been addressed. If that, if that property is ever sold or anything, the listing real estate agent will have to, will be notified because I'd pull every kind of information on that property. So whoever owns that property at time will have to get it out the code or they will have to get the buyer of that property to get it up the code. They'll have to work that out. Eventually, it will come to a breast.
I'm just, well, I'm just about no permits. I mean, you done, you did something and didn't get a permit or anything? I mean, is there, I mean, how far do you go back or is there a certain time? Is that in the, is that in the ordinances or statute anywhere?
I don't, I'll have to check in on that part. I'm not really sure. Okay, that's not a, yeah.
And if it's all right, Mr. Chairman, I have, on this information form, which I certainly approve, I would of get the information out to everybody. You know, the, whatever you, little thing you did, do I need a permit or not? That little folder and these things right here. But it just mentions your department, the, it says right here, start by applying with environmental health and zoning. People won't know, they need to know what's needed there also, in my opinion. If you're gonna go out as a group altogether, just put it all on one paper, what's required with environmental health? What's required with zoning? But you've got what you need, the proper application, the intended use of the building. But I could see us including the steps of what's required from environmental health and what's required, is it?
Yeah, environmental health is the first one up there. If you look, it gives you the steps, site maps, all that kind of stuff right there. And then
Oh, so all this is included?
Yes, sir.
These one, two, three, four, five, these six bullet points covers everything?
That covers environmental health and then building permits is down here. So, I mean, again, it's the one-stop shop.
How about the zoning? How does, how does people know if they got to be rezoned or not?
Well, when they come in our office, they'll start with environmental health because we got to make sure all that point. And at that point, once environmental health passes, that's when zoning and building kind of work together at that point to try to get everything square.
And the other thing, too, is you got to remember, we have five zoning jurisdictions in the county. You had the four towns and there are three of them have ETJs and the county zoning, and they're all different. And so it's impossible to summarize all that on a single sheet of paper, so.
Okay, well, who's to tell me? I'm gonna come in for a permit. Who's to tell me if I need to be rezoned or not?
At that point, if you're, again, if you're part of Pilot, Mount Airy, Elkin or Dobson, you would have to reach out to them. But if it's Surrey County.
Hey, it's me.
Right, Surrey County. What you would do at that point would send you over to Marty and his department, which is right there together with us to go through the rezoning process. And at that point, you know, and again, with environmental health, they generally go first because you got to make sure everything's on par and work. So at that time, then it turns over to zoning and once zoning is approved, then we can start with the building permit.
If I come in seeking to do something, all my questions will be answered. And if I don't have the questions, you're gonna tell me.
Right, exactly. We're here to help, yes.
I mean, that's what I mean. So if they come in to apply, they want to do something, we should be able to cover every avenue one way or the other.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else?
One thing I was gonna say, one, just one more question. You said that after our last discussion, it generated interest from the public, a lot of people came in and that 90% of the people plus want to do the right thing, maybe 10% or less don't necessarily want to do the right thing, but until they have to. But is our public website up to speed? And I don't even, I should know this and I don't, but if I'm looking to start a new structure or to start an Airbnb or if I want to come and add on to my farm shop, you know, it didn't used to be that way, but like we just discussed a few years ago, what was, it is. A good number of those people that are wanting to do the right thing, one of the first things it would look like to me they're wanting to do, they're not going to know anything about this process. I don't even know anything about some of it myself. And I've been hanging around here looking at this stuff for a little while, but but would you say our, our website is adequate to go on there and say, okay, let's go to permitting. Then you click on permitting and then it gives you a dropdown page. These are the things you need if you're going to build a new structure. This is what you need to do with environmental, this is what you need to do about zoning questions, this is what you need to do. And if you live in the township or the town of Mount Airy, there's another dropdown sheet. If you live in the town of Elkin, here's another dropdown sheet. The Dobson, another dropdown sheet. Pilot Mountain, another dropdown sheet. So where's, even though that would be a lot of work and it may already exist, but that would also capture a lot of people's attention and it would answer their questions. And they would know a little bit better than just come over here and say, well, you know, I didn't know who to go see or where to go or how to get there. Do we, is our website up to speed on that or can it use some work?
It needs some work. I would say yes, and that's, you know, we're rebuilding this department. It's only been two years in and we've got a lot of things that we're trying to get back to where it needs to be. And yes, the website needs to be addressed and, you know, that's next on my list. If not right now, we'll add to it. We can always improve. And that's how we're looking at it. Always can get better in our department.
Yeah, I promise I'm not picking on you too. I just want to know, is it up to speed or not? Because that would certainly give a lot of information quickly to people.
You're right, and you're, we do need to get it better. And that's one of my goals, to get it better.
Keith, I know you've reworked the letter that you had here last time. And I think it's, I really, you know, it's a lot more palatable to me. I was curious, as far as licensed electrical contractors, plumbers, tradesmen, HVAC people, Home Builders Association, I mean, is there, is there a database or some way that you can contact these people en masse as far as, you know, I'm assuming that these people know that you're supposed to get a permit.
Yes, sir.
And I'm also assuming that the people who have done conversions and those sorts of things have hired people that are tradesmen and builders and that sort of thing in Surrey County that know that they were supposed to get a permit. This letter that you've got here, that we're going to send to the carport companies and what have you, who all specifically is that, would that letter go to?
Letter for not the electrical contractor letter, but the other letter is what the townships have asked for as well, too. Because a lot of these buildings are going up without zoning permits. So this is a joint effort with us and the townships, but this letter is. But yes, it'll be going toward the metal carports, these skid buildings like you see at
Leonard's and places.
Exactly, yeah, swimming pools and actually fence, we don't, we don't permit fences. But if, unless it's on a commercial property. But zoning wise, you have to have zoning permit for fences. And that's a lot of the stuff that, you know, the townships are looking for. So yes, it's pools, fences, those companies. Just to.
Okay, and these, again, these, these laws and things that we are looking to educate people on as well as enforce fairly and as equitably as we possibly can. These are the same laws and the state stat, and same statute that's listed here in your paper. It's a state statute that that all counties have to follow, is that correct?
Right, and this whole letter is mainly protecting citizens because the citizens are the ones that are getting are the ones that, you know, get the, they don't know any better. Like I said, the last time I was here, I had a contract where one of the companies checked no permit required when it was required. The homeowner had no clue. So he's stuck because it was a metal building. With metal buildings, you have to have special inspections with that, it could cost him $2,000 or $3,000. That's the homeowner having to pay that. Not these companies, they're already long gone, and I think this letter is trying to put these companies in check that, hey, you guys are gonna be accountable too, not just these homeowners, because you know better.
Okay, gentlemen, where we're going with this?
I want to make one more comment, Keith. Now, I heard you say that it's really picked up since we the, since we started all this discussion, is that correct?
Yeah, people are coming in and getting it right.
They're getting it right, and I would assume I would probably keep on going. Once we get more information out, more information, educating the people. Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna, in my opinion, just me, I feel like I would like for them to continue with that process and let them continue doing their job as they're doing without the stipulation of being fined and such as that right at this present time. The information The information, education, I I I'm loving it. Uh, that's what we all need, everybody.
Mm hmm.
Uh, and too, too bad, you're not going to get to everybody.
Right.
But just give it our best effort, in my opinion, but, uh, as far as the educating our, the the citizens who are our bosses.
Yeah.
And to help, to help with that, I I I would see that it's just continue what we're doing. Uh, I have to admit, we're all getting phone calls.
Yeah.
Uh, and, you know, and maybe, and we're trying to help understand and answer questions. I even had, uh, some information shared with me by Marty and Chris tonight before we started the meeting and it satisfied me because lots of times we just hear one side, okay? Well, we should hear two before we, but I I feel like, uh, uh, the citizens, the 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 person that wrote you, uh, saying amen or what all you're doing and everything, I hope you get more of that. But I I feel like, in my opinion, just owe it to the, owe it to the citizens, the property owners, all these. Uh, I'd love for us to educate them and, uh, uh, and give them all the information they need before we jump into saying this or that and the timeframes and all I can, because you say it's picked up and you you barely can handle what you got, I I mean, with the team you got. And and so I'm going to say we've, you've made a big step. I I just want us to make a great big old giant step and and we regret it right now.
Okay.
That's how I feel, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson, well said. Commissioner Tucker?
Commissioner Johnson, I kind of like that train of thought. I I think I I could concur to that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, um, now, that, as far as the fine is, um, that would take board action, is that right? If we change the fine from going to the hundred dollars? Um, so what, but what we decide tonight, if we don't address the fine, is wouldn't take board action, is that correct? Just a consensus or we would need action, Ed? No action, just a consensus? Okay, um, anyone else care to weigh in tonight? You good?
I'm good, I like all the educational items and, uh, keep it up to speed, so.
Okay, and I I I concur with you, uh, Commissioner Marion. Um, the, um, uh, to to do the way we're doing, I I want to reiterate that, uh, this board doesn't mean to be heavy handed with the citizens, um, um, but we do have an obligation under general statute law in North Carolina. And, um, that is very clear about a lot of these things. And there are serious safety issues concerned with some of them. And, uh, they are things that we have to take very, um, very serious. And, uh, we're obligated to enforce the law equally to everyone. Um, if if someone, if a lot, you know, people get building permits, um, and for the folks that are doing it without permits, it's not fair. The law should apply equally, in my opinion, to everyone. And, um, but we want to be consistent with the state statutes and, gentlemen, I concur with you. And, uh, do you have a, uh, we're going to do the letter, is that correct?
I'm suggest any, I love the website, I love anything you can do to educate who needs to be educated and and to be informed more, you know, uh.
Well, what I think.
Whatever it takes.
What I think we're doing, and I could be wrong, that maybe you you can weigh in on this, Keith, but
Mm hmm.
It looks like we're doing about everything that you're asking us to do except putting a big sharp set of teeth in it and giving, giving everybody just a little bit more opportunity to comply. And we can look at this thing down the road and we can put some teeth in it anytime we need to.
Okay.
I think that's what we're doing.
Okay, so is that a letter or no letter?
I think the letter's part of the education.
Yeah, that's.
Okay.
Everything up to the hundred dollar fine.
Up to the fine, okay.
Listen, I'm sorry.
There was one other thing I forgot to mention, um. The, the other thing that was brought up, thank you, Sandy, um, the, the process of notifying, it was in your packet as well, um, that we came up with four different options, uh, because there was a discussion with the stickers and how that was done. Um, trying to find that, sorry, um.
We want to make sure that you leave here tonight with clear direction.
Right.
So if you have any
Well.
questions.
Yes, so option one is what the the call, email the property owner. Uh, this will allow us to talk to, directly to the owner by phone or and follow it up with an email. Uh, this way it can be set up, uh, a time to meet with the owner because a lot of times we're just notifying them that, hey, we found a building that hasn't been permitted. We don't know the violations, but we'd like to meet with you to get in there and see what we can do to get it compliant. Uh, the only concern with that, a lot of time we can't reach people and and we leave a voicemail, no response, so.
Can I interject?
Yes, sir.
Um, um, and I don't know how the rest of the board members feel about this. And and I understand the one stop shop, four man thing.
Hmm.
But in my opinion, it's very intimidating for four people with government
Okay.
Identif- take identification tags to go out and roll up on somebody. Um, I don't know how the rest of the commissioners feel about that, but, you know, if one man pulls up, you know, it's not so bad, but, um.
It is intimidating.
It it is very intimidating for four, four county.
I'd probably run down through the woods.
And and, you know.
Take off running.
And that's, again, you know, this is one of them things that we just don't. I speak for environmental health and there's a reason why we do that and and I under, I could see where it's intimidating.
It's back to last meeting when when I said sometimes it's the personal touch, that phone call. If if it's the little things and and we had that conversation. They're in gross violation. I mean, they throwing up Airbnb and they not permitted, I say go to them. But if it's simple, with simple little things, make a phone call, but not all four, not all four departments are rolling up in driveway. Maybe like Sheriff Hart rolling up in there with fifteen, uh, sheriff pickings. Uh, we'd obviously went through the woods at my house. I mean.
Yeah.
Scared dead.
Right.
I mean, that that's kind of, I mean, really, that's, that's what it boils down to.
So let's go through these one by one here.
Okay.
On 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 number one, steps to get into compliance, number one. So, Commissioner Goins, what you're saying is 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 in agreement with what I see of the about.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, what's your reaction to that, Keith?
Well, I I and I can understand that, I really do. And we just, again, what I, our purpose was to try to.
I understand that, I understand.
And maybe that's what we need to go back and address that we don't go as a group like that.
Let's, let's work on that one.
Okay.
And and try to, uh, because that is intimidating. I mean, four people roll up from the government and tell you they're here to help you. I mean, that's, um, a little concerning. Uh, number two.
Well, you got, they've got the paper now to, they roll up.
Yeah.
Tell them what.
Right.
That's some of the information they're giving out.
All right.
Yes, sir.
You want to go on down the list?
Yeah, our other option is to leave a, uh, like a, a door hanger like Ter- uh, Terminex does. It's not a sticker, but something you put on a door handle. Uh, we've researched that, didn't say it gives a call. Um, we also looked at, uh, number three is leaving a packet, which is basically an envelope with the violations and like what Commissioner Marion just showed, the violations from each department, we could leave that. Uh, stickers, which was, has always been our way of communicating over the years. I know, um, it it's, it serves as best, our best way. And we get the most effectiveness out of those. So those are the four options that we we've come up with and, um.
That's one thing I, I don't understand is just all of a sudden became taboo.
Right.
Like I said last meeting, I've I've done electrical work for several years and we got stickers all the time.
Well, and you know.
The way to do it and, uh.
The, we, Surrey County's always used stickers.
They have, and I don't understand why all of a sudden they've become, you know, the people just go crazy. You get stickers say what's, what was, what failed or what was wrong.
It just says, please give us a call about your building.
Okay.
And that's all it's.
I don't, it don't tell you nothing, it's just.
I say.
Get a green one, you're good, if you get an orange one, you.
Yeah.
Not good.
You you still good with using the stickers, Mark?
I am.
I am too. Commissioner Goins, you you still good with using the stickers that on the door? Just leave a sticker? Pardon me?
I'd do.
Well, we've always used them in Surrey County, I don't know, uh, Commissioner Tucker?
We've got to, we got to let them know there's a problem. Maybe, maybe it doesn't say Houston, you've got a problem nine one one, but maybe it says you got a problem, call. So somebody.
Commissioner Johnson, you okay with stickers?
I I feel like they have to, but but just leaving something and just say, yeah, by letter or this or that, that's probably going to get the most attention, like you, is that a correct statement?
Right, we could leave it.
Get the biggest response from that.
Mm hmm.
And you date it, you do everything and you leave all the information needed them to re- respond.
Right.
Okay, yeah, I don't see we need to change that.
Okay, and we're not going to do the hundred dollars today, fine, um, and we're not going to do the letter from the sheriff, I mean.
No, we're not going to do that.
Okay, all right, and.
So I think what we're going to do with that one, the the second one, we're not doing the sheriff, we're going to do like a FedEx letter where they have to sign for it. It was going to cost us some money, but we will at least know that they got it.
But in in the end, in the end, if if they do not comply, there's got to be consequences.
That's, that's four weeks, that's a whole month.
Well, if 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 they don't respond, I, you know, there's, we're talking about a fine, but not right now, but there's, there is a lot of consequences to it if they don't, they, uh, I think you said the end results, the, they, they, it's, it's no power, no anything. But I, the reason I commented, it just, Jessica, you know, with the landfill and we've done these stickers, well, we got phone calls on those too and everything, but to hear that there's a lot of progress made, I feel like, you know, we're headed, you know, we're in the right direction, so it's not, um, I don't, I don't think, I don't think, uh, the stickers has cost anybody any money yet. Uh, is that a correct statement, Jessica? Okay, but anyway, they they probably really deserved it. But I'm just saying that we've made, we're making a great deal of progress and you shared that. So I I'm, I'm content right now, is keep on making progress.
Okay, now, one more question, on on that one letter going to the companies, holding them accountable, are you okay with us finding them as well as the homeowners or making them? If if the homeowners produce, produce the information that they were not told and and they're totally innocent, are you guys okay with us putting it back on the companies?
Absolutely, with the companies, no. It's no, no, they're licensed.
Right.
All your electrical contractors, your carpenters, your, your, all your subcontractors know they've got to work with a permit. And it's negligent that they they do it without it.
Ed, can, again, uh, can we find a third party company? With success?
Yes, sir, we can, uh, require the contractor, installer and the homeowner to be jointly responsible for, uh, complying with our ordinance. And if it doesn't, if it's not complied with, they're, they're all implicated.
So who gets the fine? In a case that where where they're out of compliance?
Well, what we're asking for in these metal carports and other buildings that are skid buildings and so forth, we're asking for contracts because you got to sign a contract. And again, that one contract was clearly marked no for permit when it was definitely required. So that homeowner proved to me that he had no clue because of the fine print on the other page, you know, he read it later. But to me, and and to go a step further, I'm working with Carport Central to have a summit with these metal carports in our built, in our service center to to, again, educate them as well to, hey, this is how you're going to have to start doing it or you're going to be be fined as well too, just so that they're back on page as well, know where we're coming from.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not arguing for him, I'm just trying to get some information.
Yeah.
I just wonder if we can ac- actually execute that, can we send a company a fine for a product they sold that the homeowner didn't get a permit for and be successful in collecting that fine and have it to be a punitive enough issue that the, that they won't do it again? I, that's my question, Ed.
That same contract that I was talking about, it also says in there, the installer must make sure that there's a permit on site from that same company. So to me, the installer is this, I mean, these companies, before you drop your building or build a building, you better make sure there's a permit there. I mean, that's just how business is done.
Uh, well, we might as well go to the lumber supply yards and tell them if they don't get a building permit, they can't carry a load of lumber somewhere. I mean, I I don't quite know that we can do that. Is, and is it precedent at anywhere? Does anybody else do that?
Uh, I can't say, but again, we're, we're the capital, carport capital of the world and, you know, this is.
Well, we're not jumping off that bridge tonight, though. On the.
Yeah.
On the manufacturers.
Okay.
Is that right?
Well, we didn't say that till just now, I didn't.
Well.
I'm, I'm saying we don't jump off that bridge tonight without a little research.
No fines tonight.
Okay, I'm good, you're good, all right, let's not do that one.
That's fine, good deal.
And I want to say too, thank you very much for coming and presenting this. And I think it's wonderful that we're doing it in public because everybody has a right to know.
Right, thank you, thank you for your time.
Anybody, anything else, gentlemen?
I was just going to say, we're not choosing sides here and thank you for coming and taking all incoming. We're just trying to do this as public education and try to get it right and 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 not be too fast.
Oh, I completely understand.
Let's add public safety to that too.
Well, the public safety is absolutely ultimate and we're going to achieve it, but I'm just saying, we, we serve a couple of functions here. We support Keith and his departments and other twenty departments in this county. And we're here ultimately and supremely to support them, but we also represent the, the greater seventy-two thousand three hundred people that's in Surrey County and we want to, we got to find the happy median there somewhere in between. Fairness is what I'm looking for.
Yeah, I completely agree.
Very good, thank you, Keith.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, thank you.
Going back to our, our list, we won't, I think we'll take it because of the holidays, we won't start back till January first. So which will begin, give those that are not compliant, time to come in and do it before we start back up in January. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Dr. Kim Morrison and Entourage. Uh, Chris, is is her information in a hand?
He was going to hand it out to you.
Okay.
That's the reason I hadn't seen it.
Watch the staples, they got me already. Hello, Jay?
Guys are usually running behind, so we're all trying to get here in time.
You were late.
You know, we were on the agenda at seven.
As we pass these out, I I do want to say, being on the construction side of this, Keith and inspections group here have been very good to work with. And we've reached out to some of these clients that have problems, have reached out to us to fix this. And working in multiple sta- multi-states like we do, we see a lot of inspection departments that say, oh, sorry, you got your sticker on your door, figure it out. And these guys are sitting here and they're working with clients and they're categorizing and running these things through triage. And they're working with clients that are coming up and saying, yeah, you've got a problem, you don't have a permit, you don't have zoning, but we can work with you. And there's been multiple times when I've seen the inspections department work with people. And I've also seen it when they've taken a look at it and taken a step back and said, this is a safety issue and it has to be addressed right away and we can't let you in. So they are taking that, so inspections department is doing a, a good job. We'll get permits.
Thank you, thank you. Yep.
Okay, so you guys, uh, supported us on the CTE renovation and we finished that up this fall. So there is a building on the site at Mount Airy High School just down below the CTE building, which is the old junior high building. Um, so that is the building that we're talking about on this, um, needs based grant, which again is a lottery funded grant similar to the CTE building. The state asks us if we're going to apply for a grant to get a five percent match from the county commissioners. Um, that list came out last week and did say that, um, it is still a five percent match. So, um, what this building would allow us to do, um, because it has, um, Surrey Community College in the top floor, it has our RISE Center, our Alternative Learning in the bottom floor. would be allowing us to expand the workforce development that you guys have already paid for in the CTE building, to be able to go ahead and put some more labs down there in the junior high, which is right beside our agriculture, um, greenhouse and our outdoor classroom for agriculture. Across the ho- uh, the highway, we have cows and a, a farm over there across, um, from OCS, you drive through the OCS parking lot, we have cows back there, but this building would be, um, housing agriculture and our esports program and our drone program, some of our engineering programs, the high-tech pieces that we've expanded at the high school would be able to be in this building. Um, as you know, from the esports programs now and the Lego robotics, like we just had at Surry Community College Saturday, they need a gym area to be able to have those competitions, so they would be able to do that in that, because there's an auxiliary gym there. And then that auxiliary gym would also be able to be used at night, but the primary piece for this old junior high would be an expansion of the workforce development. Um, you guys know we're a tier-one county, you know that all of our students K-12 get free and reduced lunch because of the program that we're in, when it's more than half of your students that are free and reduced lunch, we get to do that for everyone, but it also shows high poverty in the city there, which allows us to be pretty competitive for this grant. Um, this lottery-based grant pays for a lot of the, um, schools around the state, and then they'll also pay for programs that are renovations that are three million dollars and less. So we try to keep our budget to less than three million dollars, um, so that we could be one of the extra possible, um, renovations that have been funded. So, uh, Yancy's here with us tonight to kind of go over the plans, just so you can see what those are. And then Jay's here because he just helped wrap up the CTE renovation, if you have any questions about that process, um, and then we'll go over our request at the end, so if you wanna talk about that.
So the, the main idea of the project is similar to what we did with CTE. We're gonna go in and update the finishes, replace ceiling tiles, upgrade the restrooms so they're handicap accessible, get everything in the current, you know, decade. So we looked at the original project and the original project was more than a three million dollar budget we wanted to do, so we thought about what can we do with bits and pieces of this? And the first thing we need to do is get the main floor accessible and available to everybody, provide new handicap restrooms that meet the count needed for the gymnasium when it's used in esports, take the existing, uh, weight rooms that are in there now that are not being used for athletics and set them up so they could be multipurpose, but their primary function be for robotics prep, so that the teams would come in and have a place to go, and then a large classroom space in the back that could be used for most spaces. Refinish the gym and reuse the gym so that it can be set up for esports and for learning labs. And then in the three classrooms that are downstairs on the bottom, update the air, the heat, and the finishes in those spaces also too. So when we get done, we would have a first floor on that building that would be comparable to the finishes and the quality of what we see in the CTE project right now, and then eventually we would go after the renovations to the second floor and go from there, but, um.
You guys have any questions about the CT project?
Are we talking about the whole junior high building, pick the first whole thing up?
The whole first floor.
The first floor. But you're saying the three, the three rooms that are as close in front of the gym.
Are the classrooms.
Yes, I mean, they'll be, it'll be worked on too, is that?
Yeah, the whole floor, the whole first floor, not, just not the second floor where Surry Community College students are right now.
Okay, first floor.
The whole first floor.
Bottom floor.
The bottom floor.
Alright.
Yep, expansion of those bathrooms to the gang bathroom, similar to what we did in CTE, because you know, those are real tiny little bathrooms, you'd make those much, much larger. Um, and make sure, we wouldn't be doing an elevator, that's why we're not doing like the phase two in the second floor, because the elevator's really expensive. That would be in a phase two if we wanted to do what the college is using, um, on the second floor in the future.
But you can see on the sketch there, we've kind of earmarked a spot for the elevator that would go right on the outside of the building, it would be pretty easy to put in. So when we come to that bridge, the stuff that we're doing now would not have to be tore up to accommodate being moved into the second part.
Right, try to build an infrastructure so you could go ahead with phase two, similar to what we've done with the CTE building, um, if you wanted to do additional work.
What is N B P S C F, I mean, was it? It's, I mean, on your, where you have your cost breakdown here.
Oh.
Oh, needs-based, uh, public school capital fund.
Okay.
Yeah.
And this is, you're applying for this, right?
You apply for it and it's due in January, it rolled out last week, it's a real quick timeline, that's why with the holidays, we decided to go ahead and get you guys here, uh, get us here to talk to you all to make sure you knew what our numbers were.
Right, and so you, you would need, um, and your deadline to apply is when?
I think January fifth or January sixth, it's a pretty quick turnaround.
And so you, you just need, um, a consensus of the board to.
For the five percent.
For the five percent.
And we've broken that down here for you with the planning, on the top row, um, would be your design fee with a five percent match of that, the construction fee on the second row with a five percent match of that, and other costs like codes and, um, different things. And then a five percent match of that for a total of one thirty-seven, seven sixty-nine, seventy-seven.
When is the grant awarded, when, what is the date?
I believe they're, they should let you know by April, so you would have a bidding process over the summer and then you would, um, start construction in the fall.
Okay. So we could potentially put this into next year's fiscal budget, is that right?
That's right, um, last time, you know, we were surprised two years ago when we got it like that.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, talking to Catherine Truitt, she, um, had a lot of faith in our school system and she also liked the career technical education programs. So it was an extra add-on that helped us get funded, so we're gonna try again. I did speak to the state to see if we were eligible, since we've gotten a grant in the last two cycles, and he said, absolutely, we were eligible. So we went ahead and put it together, Yancy did the design, we got a construction company to give us the numbers, um, and with CTE, I believe we're really close.
Yes.
Very close with our numbers, so what we projected, we've been able to do under bu- under budget, I think, or close.
Right.
Very, very close.
I had the last, uh, about to argue that with Cor on the day, but, uh, I had the last discussion, yeah. Last conversation with Cor on the day, so they're gonna come out with their final payout, which, um, it's really close, I met with Laura last week. Our, my numbers are our numbers and her numbers were line for line the same, and so we feel real good about what happened with the CTE project, which is, and exactly the same thing over again here.
But if you look, then we were doing the CTE building for about, you know, two million, now you're doing one floor for two point seven.
What does this date to, what does this date back, how far does this date back, the existing?
Sixties.
Sixties, so it, it hasn't been updated since the sixties?
No. They tore down half of the junior high, if you'll remember, between the buildings, they tore it down and they left this part of the junior high.
Yeah.
It is by far the oldest building on our campus.
Mr. Chairman, they tore down where I got my last paddling from.
Well, you probably.
If you come to go in there, it's kind of a walk back through time and, uh.
And it's not changed since the sixties, I don't think, just kind of like the CTE building hasn't changed since sixty-nine.
I think Commissioner Johnson probably needed that paddling anyway.
I, uh, I, I think it's great that you want to and you're involved in, you know, I was tickled to tour the, the, the new finished building there that, uh, that was built when I, uh, I was one of the first students in that building and that's got, it's got old and it needed to refit. So this is even older building than that, uh, but if, if you get, if you get it, uh, I'm sure the school board has some monies to help with some of these up, upfront costs. You know, if, if we gi- give a consensus sometime another, af- after you get it, uh, I don't think, I don't think the Mary School Board is gonna stop anything such as these improvements, whether we say yes right now or two months from now, whenever, you know, five percent, uh, uh, I, I'm sure this is a very needed thing and, and you're asking us to help and, and, uh, I assume, is it required?
It is, if you don't, you can't go for the grant without the five percent match, which is why we come. And then the, the school board normally puts around a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand aside for it. We've already cut out that much from the plans to be able to come under three million, so you'll have like, like right now, if you walk in there, the gym is on one side. So the gym has to move the floor to the middle and buy the bleachers on the side, so the, the school, school district would have to pe- pay for the bleachers. And we pulled out some, so we pulled out about a hundred and fifty to two hundred that, that the school district would.
Furniture, fixture and equipment, things that y'all could buy through, you know.
Yeah, we just pulled all that out and put that aside, and when we presented to the school board last week, we explained to them that there would be about two hundred thousand they would have to pay for, which we had put aside for the CTE building, uh, about that much, but we didn't have to use contingency, which allowed us to cut that price down, so. We have skin in the game.
Well, I, I'm just saying, so it, it requires, uh, from the governmental source of, of the five percent. That's, that's the requirement as far as getting the grant.
To be able to even apply for it.
Yeah, even apply for it.
But that can be money that's already been granted to you from the county or in your budget or new money that you would come and ask us for, it could be either, is that right?
Has to be, um, to, to this project only, and it has to be them.
But I mean, if, if, you know, it could be money that you already had available, or it would be, you would have to come and ask for new money. It has to come from somewhere this county funded, not necessarily new money that'd have to be approved at this point forward. It could be the money that, if you found some, if you were lucky enough to find some, it could be money that you already had.
My understanding is it just has to be, whatever our total amount is in the grant application, you have to agree to give us five percent of that for this project.
And my question is, is that new appropriation or appropriation that we might have given you six months ago at the last budget?
New appropriation.
New appropriation.
Yep, if you get funded. If you don't, you don't have to give it a course, you know.
Well, that's interesting. Uh, this, uh, last CTE thing we did, you know, it was, it later they came back and did an audit. And that audit, uh, for compliance on Title IX or what, or whatever they're, Jake, can you remind me what that audit was from?
It's, you're talking about for?
ADA.
ADA, yes.
Yeah, they haven't been back yet, uh, but it's, uh, I mean, it is up to ADA codes, is up to, uh, I mean, everything's.
Everything inside the building that was associated with the project was put to ADA.
Yeah.
And our, our understanding from the federal government was that Elkin had had one in the last five years and it was our turn to have one, where, because we were a smaller school district.
Yeah. You know, I've actually talked to some folks over there and they, they tell me that their obligation was to say, we're working on it, uh, without a drop-dead timeline on, but we get up and dance here, Mark.
My church, my church, boy.
A simple.
So I guess, I'm, what my question is, would this grant also be subject to such a inquiry or, or audit from the same people, essentially it was a CTE project across the street?
They did not audit that building, but anytime, and Yancy can correct me if I'm wrong, anytime you make any improvements, if you start on a building, you have to bring it up to ADA compliance.
Yeah, everything that we touch inside will be brought up to ADA, so that's part of the plan. Now, if we were to start to work with certain areas on the second floor, we would end up having to bring that area up. That's why we're, look, you know, putting all of our focus on the first floor, so it's just as it is right now.
But I think where you may be headed is, no, they will not come back.
Is that gonna happen again?
No, I do not think, it doesn't mean that they can't, because they can, uh, audit you at any time, any school district.
But this one will be compliant under these plans.
And, and what they, when we spoke to those folks originally, they basically said that they do, I believe, five school systems a year.
And they didn't know we had a grant.
Right.
Because we told them that half of the plan would be taken care of in a grant, and we submitted the plans, so they relaxed a little bit.
Because I told them, I said, so that means that you'll really be back in twenty or thirty years, right? And probably not.
They said they were gonna check in in November with us to see how much we had gotten taken care of. We were able to submit the CTE plans, which checked off a bunch of boxes, and then we put in parking lot signs and all the signs in all the building, in all the buildings, so we took care of as much as we could. The only thing left now is construction, which, which is the locker rooms.
And again, I don't mean to, I just wanna make sure I get the right understanding for my benefit. If you had a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred sixty-nine dollars and seventy-seven cents, which com- would comprise the total match, and you already had it in your budget, and you didn't know what in the world you was gonna do with that money? You think in order to be eligible for this grant, you couldn't just come up with that money that's already county-funded money, but it would have to be new county-funded money?
According to the application, it has to be new funding that goes to this building only. You're marked for this building, but it's only if you get funded, like if we don't get funded, you don't have to provide that five percent match, it's just, if you get two million, seven hundred fifty-five thousand, three hundred ninety-five, thirty, one hundred and thirty-seven, seven sixty-nine has to, uh, has to come from you guys as, as part of that.
Do you have to, do you have to include a letter of intent or anything like that from the county VOCC?
The, um, chair has to sign off.
Okay.
I think that's.
It's a signature.
Yeah, there, there's no commitment as far as money-wise, except if the grant comes.
And if you get the grant, you can sign off at that time as to whether you accept it or not. And some counties, like, I won't name some of the counties, but some of the counties weren't shovel-ready, so they, um, did not accept the money and then they don't get to apply for five years. So, like, if you're gonna go for it, then, you know, you can choose not to take the money when they award it, but then if you don't take the money, then they would hold off on letting you apply for the grant.
And what would it be when you would know if you got?
April.
April, so we have some time.
Well, we've gotta turn this in.
You gotta apply, you gotta go ahead and apply for the grant, but with, as a board, we got some time.
Before you decide to accept it.
Decide to fund it.
Yep.
And, and you really, and like you said a minute ago, you, this can go into the next fiscal year, because there is no way that anything can happen before July one as far as the construction side of it. So, uh, the need for money wouldn't be until next fiscal year.
Well, the need for our part of the money wouldn't, you wouldn't need it till the project's done. I mean.
Or you get close to closing out the book.
That's what I mean.
That's right, that's kind of how we've done the CTE building.
Alright, anybody else?
I agree to rate the money next fiscal budget and to, and just the own, uh, receiving the grant.
So I think we're just.
I'd say we wait to see how everything lines up, how the ducks line up, and then we got plenty of time to make that decision.
Consensus will do.
I, I think.
I said, if they got the grant.
Just a consensus is all we're looking for here. A, a consensus that, um.
We'll have the chairman to sign the application.
That, uh, that will allow me to sign a application, um, to provide a local match of five percent, um, if they receive the two million, six hundred seventeen thousand. Um, and it wouldn't be contingent on any timeline going forward, it just, you know, it'd be next fiscal year or.
Would be committing.
But it, it would be.
It would be committing that amount of money in the event they ever get the grant.
Yes.
Okay.
That is the, uh, okay, Commissioner Marion? Commissioner Owens? Commissioner Tucker?
No.
Commissioner Johnson? You good? Okay, alright, looks like we got a consensus.
Thank you.
Okay, um. Sheriff Steve, hi.
What are you doing, Steve?
Tony, how you doing? Yeah, doing good, yeah, yeah. Yeah, well, is it raining outside yet?
It's a good thing.
It started a little, well, we sure need, I believe it's the driest fall I've ever seen.
It's not pretty good.
Terrible.
Did you get one, Dan?
There you go.
Yeah, I got one, someone.
Alrighty. Good evening, Commissioners.
Evening.
Hopefully we won't take too long, too much of your time here, but, uh, uh, just wanted to talk to you about a, uh, issue that some of you are familiar with and we've been talking with the county management about for several months now. Um, and that is the, uh, safekeeping budget with the jail. Uh, we, uh, when the budget was approved, uh, all intentions and everything, everybody, to our knowledge and, and I think to y'alls and everybody's, that we would be in the detention center by July. And as you know, we're not, this is, uh, we're in the fifth month now of the new budget. And as you know, we're not, this is, we're in the fifth month now of the new budget. We uh and the paper I give you there will show you currently as of today, uh we have thirty nine housed outside. Um, we have a hundred and eighty in in the house. Um. And of course, as you see in that uh front page at the very bottom, what that's costing us a day. Uh, right now, we're spending twenty two hundred and fifty seven dollars a day for those thirty nine. Uh, since July, we've averaged uh thirty two out, one eighty five in-house. That's been our good average. Uh. As of today.
What'd you say that was again? In-house average?
One eighty five.
One eighty five.
Yep, that's been the average. As of today, uh spoke with Laura earlier today. We spent to two hundred thousand, three hundred and eighty two dollars and eighty four cents in the safekeeping. Uh, we budgeted for seventy five thousand.
Now, safekeeping is the prisoners, that's your definition of of the prisoners that are out of county?
Yes, it absolutely. This is uh, this is prisoners that we're paying other counties to hold for us for because of our space.
What is DAC NC safekeeping? You've got two there. What does that mean?
That is uh, that is something that uh that is called the state safekeeping. Uh, most of the time that's used, uh very rarely used, but uh medical conditions that they that we can't handle here in there in there in Raleigh.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Uh, the original, the original seventy five thousand that we budgeted um should have been more more than enough to cover our normal safekeeping at Raleigh. Uh, because if we was in the new center, new center, of course, we wouldn't be, should not have anybody housed out. So currently, as you see, we have only two that's in the Raleigh safekeeping. And even if we had to pay for somebody a whole year in that safekeeping, uh, you know, that's uh nowhere close that we, I think it's like twenty thousand dollars would be for one. That we would have plenty in our budget. So I guess what I'm saying is is uh nobody expected us to be here at this time in this state, but uh we're we're spending money that we don't have in our budget, so we're trying to come to you for for help on that.
So two hundred, two thousand, two hundred fifty seven dollars divided by thirty nine. Is that fifty seven dollars a day? Is that what that is?
If you look at the uh each county's got a little different pay.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, there's not really a standard. Uh, you'll see there what Allegheny charges, Gabarus, McDowell, Stokes and Yakken. Each one of them's got a little different.
So it's going to average about fifty eight bucks a day of average, yeah. Um. Your in-house costs, just curious, and you may not know this, but the your in-house cost to house an inmate? Wonder what that would be?
I I know we've we've done some studies on that. I'm not sure. Lieutenant Shelton, do you know what that number is?
Okay. Yeah. All right, so.
So.
Guess the question is when we moving into the new jail?
Well, so that's a question that that, of course, I don't know that any of us know right now. I have, I don't have any. I know we have another inspection coming up. Twenty ninth. Um.
End of the month, the state comes back now.
Will that be the final inspection?
We we sure hope so.
No, we're not gonna get any this year, this year only year.
Correct. So uh my what we've spent already, plus, you know, if you count this month, if you go all the way through January, the end of January, which I think would be probably a smart idea. You know, you're talking about another eighty to ninety days. Well, so you know, I'm I'm saying a little probably two hundred thousand more on top of what's already been spent.
I would recommend that we allow them to work with the finance officer and bring amendments if necessary to the board. Um, between now and then.
So when when are your funds gonna run out?
So in that line item, it it's it's already.
It's already extended.
Deleted.
Okay, so.
Now, to total budget, we're still okay at the moment, but.
Right, so you're saying, I don't know, how often?
You all adopt, when you adopt the budget, you adopt by department. You don't adopt line item budgets. And that's how that they can continue to pay for it, but it will deplete the things they may need later in the year. That's why I was saying it might be better to continually lay out, let them work with Laura and any amendments that might be needed, budget amendments to the board.
With real numbers.
Real numbers.
Yeah.
If that's agreeable to.
Well, I assume that they can make it till whenever it happens. Is that a big statement? Till the end of January or such as?
Yeah, as as an overall budget, I think we're at thirty, we're only at, we're not too bad, say, we're thirty some percent, so we're right on, pretty close.
So actually, you could run it till you moved into the new jail and just bring us a real number.
Right, absolutely. We uh, there's no, we just want to make sure everybody's.
Yeah, well, thank you. Yeah, that's great that you're here and you're keeping us informed and all that, yeah.
Absolutely.
I drive down there once or twice every about every week and uh just to see it.
Well, it it can't be quick enough.
I don't, I don't see it being end of January though. I believe we'll be any quicker than that.
Uh, we do have a a plan and uh the sheriff and uh Lieutenant Shelton, all of us. Uh, the moment we can, that's we will, we'll have inmates in at the moment we can.
I would like to uh, something that's a lot of people has asked uh before we do, you know, like the ribbon cutting or whatever, we need to do a couple of community tours. Set, try to set that up for the, you know, his his interested parties that uh would like to walk through that and see it all and and uh.
We've had, we've had several.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, but uh, but absolutely.
Need to advertise one to, you know, to maybe maybe the community surrounding it that we've upset for two, two and a half years. You know, look, we've got a nice facility right here that uh we hate, we had to build it. But uh, state of the art and uh and we did combine nine one one and magistrate's office, so uh, I'd like for some of those folks to be able to come and look at it to know what's been going on.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, sir, I think we got to be able to pay and, you know, whether you bar from one pot of money to pay the other, it's kind of like with the last topic, you probably don't have that much extra money laying around for this fiscal budget I would give.
You know, I know by the end of the budget year, we we'll have, there'll have to be some.
Yeah.
Adjustment.
So I just want to say, yes, I, it's gotta be done and I'm certainly for it, but and I think old board is, but you know, but getting together with finances and seeing exactly where we stand on that line item, I think would be good.
Sounds great to me.
Larry, I uh not pertaining to uh finances, but you said you're y'all ready to go?
Yes, sir.
Uh, training, uh personnel, we're ready to go?
Uh, training, yes, we're uh Lieutenant Shelton, uh been having lots of training. I think we've got, I I feel confident that at least every every shift uh could go down there, could go to work today. And it is a big difference compared to what we have now. So it is, won't be an adjustment, but I think we're ready for it. Uh, we've got together, had several meetings, got a good plan together on the transfer. Uh, of course, that'll be, uh, you know, we'll, we'll try to, probably nobody much will know that when we're gonna do that, so we uh, for safety, of course. Yes, sir, we're ready. And then personnel wise, um, do I think we can do it with personnel we got now? Yes, of course, as y'all know, uh we we will can, as as we add inmates, we will have to come and ask for more personnel as that time come.
Have you maxed out what we've already approved?
Yes, sir.
You have?
We uh, we have uh our efforts, very proud of our guys, that our efforts uh for the first time, you know, we uh, we are fully staffed. We are fully staffed.
Very good. Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
Um, is that it? Okay, all righty. Uh, county manager, Chris Knott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item I have is more informational, uh to let the public know as real as the board. But recently, the town managers and I and our steering committee completed the housing market study project that we've been working on for some time. Uh, the executive summary is available on the county website on the development services page. Uh, anyone who wants a full-blown document can request that and we'll provide a copy. Over the course of this month, the town managers, myself, are making this information available to the elected bodies as well as to civic groups over the next few months. I just want to run through a few of the, well, I think is interesting information to why we have the current market rate housing situation that we do in Surrey County, because the study's specific to Surrey County and no other. Surrey County's population is starting to grow again. Most of that growth is around the forming municipalities or in close proximity to it. Demand is not just coming from new movers, it's coming from existing residents who are looking to improve their living conditions. Last year, five thousand, six hundred people moved within Surrey County. That included folks moving in as well as folks who are here. With births and folks moving in from other places, there were twenty seven hundred new residents in Surrey County on average each year now. That doesn't take into account the death rates. We're not growing by that number. We are seeing a lot of new residents, whether they're born here or whether they're moving here. And we're still very significant importer of labor for our local businesses and industry. That number is at twelve thousand, five hundred in twenty twenty, driving into the county to work. One of the most significant changes, I think, the study revealed was the the amount of wealth that people in our community are starting to accumulate with their annual salaries. For the first time ever, Surrey County's household income growth is at levels higher than fifty thousand. As a matter of fact, the category from fifty thousand to seventy five thousand now makes up twenty two percent of households. If you look at the, there's a graph on the second page of that report, but if you look at the types of income categories in the county, it has flipped since twenty sixteen. Whereas it used to be that the lower paying income categories for wages in this county were the fastest growing and the higher income categories were lower, it's flipped now. Individuals are making more money in the higher categories. That's where the growth in jobs is. It's not the lower end of the spectrum. So more wealth is being generated in the community than ever before. And these numbers were taken before the effects of the pandemic on inflation and other factors. So some of that's not captured here. So that 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 increase was occurring prior to the results or the impacts of the pandemic on the economy. We are gaining jobs in the county. We continue to gain jobs. Higher paying occupations, as I just said, are growing, and our labor participation force has grown by four point three percent. That's a good sign. The strong demand, I think, is coming from not only the increase in wealth in the community, but also for this statistic. Between twenty sixteen and twenty twenty one, households in the county increased by seven percent, but the housing stock declined by one percent. While the number of households increased significantly, the number of units available for housing was declining. And that was part of the reason, in addition to the loss of local contractors who built speculative housing during the Great Recession, going away and no one coming in to fill that void over the last fifteen years. For instance, talent country builders, a big supplier of speculative housing in this county for decades, no longer exists. And there's really been no entity that's come in to fill that void. I won't go through all the statistics, but the executive summary is a state that is in your packet. If you'd like a full-blown market study, it is available. We did have a housing summit on June first, which some of you were able to attend. We did have a a large number of home builders from outside the market, those that aren't currently in the market who attended. And I I believe over the next few months, you'll start to see some activity. I know each of the municipalities um with some of the available properties for development that were presented during that summit are seeing activity from the private sector. I just want to make sure that you knew that that was available for review. Is there any questions?
You know, I don't have any questions, but I have a comment. Um. The lack of um affordable homes in Surrey County is very concerning to me. I see it all the time and I hear about it all the time. The thing that um, and a lot of this is factors that are external from um, on a national level, but uh young people here in Surrey County can hardly afford to be a first time home buyer now.
Mm-hmm.
We've never seen that before. Um, and a lot of it is based on supply and demand. Some of it is based on interest rates. Uh, the out of control spending in Washington and the national debt is in um um inflation is highly inflationary and um and it is really sad to me that our young people um are really gonna have a hard time um being first time home buyers um at 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 the level of what we see now for home prices and interest rates and all things considered. I know wages have gone up, but you know what? Inflation's eating that, eating that up as fast as it goes up. And um and it just, I don't see a fix on the horizon uh for it. Uh, the lack of contractors and people building homes is concerning. The lack of skilled tradesmen is concerning. Um, we see it all the time at the community college. Um, and um, so, you know, it's a pretty grim spot, prospects today, in my opinion, for young people getting in, getting into a first time home.
You're right, and you'll see it in this report, sort of referred to as the missing middle. And that is those folks who can afford that that sort of middle income home. And hopefully, some of what we accomplished over the summer will lead to some of that being developed in the county. There is opportunity.
Mm-hmm.
It's just a matter of finding the right uh private sector home builders to come in and meet that demand. Meeting in it in some of the counties around us, for whatever reason, it just wasn't occurring here, but
Yeah.
I give a lot of credit to some of our local CEOs and business owners who came to the summit to give their read on it while they were having trouble retaining talent, recruiting talent because of the housing situation. And um we let them sell it to these home builders, not not the four or five local governments. We let the private sector sell it for why it was such a need. So hopefully, we're not talking about tax credit housing, you know, workforce housing.
Yeah.
Or, you know, uh, government funded housing.
No, I'm not.
Market rate.
Yeah, I'm talking about market rate housing and 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 homes that are on the real estate market. And I looked over that thing and how few homes are on the real estate market.
Mm-hmm.
And uh, and the ones that do come on the market sell within two days. And a lot of times it's folks from outside Surrey County buying them. Um, and uh, you know, they they pay whatever you ask. And, you know, the homes here that were really hot five years ago, um, were the homes in a hundred twenty five thousand dollar range. Well, I'm sorry, but those houses now are two fifty. And and it is, uh, and it just, it just doesn't seem to be any end of it. And with the inflationary pressures on everything, um uh, it's driving, uh, you know, it's eating up the wage increases and the and the cost of living adjustments that we give here at the county. Um, it's a, it's a really grim prospect. It's it's about as bad as I've seen since nineteen. I can remember when interest rates were thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen percent. Um, and homes, uh, you know, a nice twelve hundred square foot brick home is fifty thousand dollars. Um, and with interest rates, the way they are, and I mean, there's some speculation that they may come down. But you know what? Inflation is still murderous. This is murderous as the interest rates. And uh, so anyway, I uh, we'll just have to, and a lot of it's beyond our control. And a lot of the, like the the house, the home building is is, you know, the free market economy pretty much dictates what happens there. And um, so, yeah, but it was really interesting. Thank you for sharing that. I thought it was very good information.
Next item I have is a request from Byron Isaacs in Emergency Management Office. He is requesting sort of blanket approval by the board to apply for reimbursement grants uh for emergency management performance hazardous materials. uh for emergency management performance, hazardous materials, emergency preparedness, Homeland Security Grant, a Tier Two Grant, uh which is related to um hazmat to fund local emergency planning committees, which we have an LEPC here, and also capacity building competitive grants. These, and Byron can come up and answer any specifics, but these are basically grants that would be sought out following a a situation, incident, a weather event, something of that nature. Is that correct, Byron?
Okay. So these grants, these grants are really for, um, like you said, emergency performance grants. That one is one that we apply for every year. It is a reimbursement and a supplemental for salaries for the emergency management program. The Tier Two Grant helps fund our LEPC, which is our Local Emergency Planning Committee. The HMEP grant that he was talking about, the hazmat, emergency planning, that one helps to either do a commodity flow study or provide money for exercises. And then you have the Homeland Security Grant Program, which allows us to, through the DIP or the Disaster Preparedness Region, um, apply for federal money to supply throughout the DIP. So, and that one is, the chances of actually applying for that one this year is pretty low. We think everything is is pretty solid right now. And then the CBCG, which is the competitive building uh or the capacity building competitive grant, that one is, it just helps build the emergency management program. Last year, we were able to fund a, or this year, we were able to fund a wilderness search and rescue team, basically, the equipment for that. So those are what those are.
And all of these grants are a hundred percent reimbursable?
Yes.
No county match?
No, no county match for any of these.
I like it all right. I like it.
How how much total dollars if you were able to, you'd be able to get?
So if we were able to get all of them and the full max of all of them, it would be around six hundred and twenty thousand? And that's using, the CBCG is the big one. It's it's up to the five hundred thousand dollar grant. And we can actually support two projects with it. So.
Make the motion that we allow the Office of Emergency Management to uh apply for the grants listed.
I have a motion from Commissioner Goins to allow EMS to apply for the grants. Have a second, Commissioner Marion. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye? Opposed? The ayes have it.
All right, next item is we have another offer on surplus property at one five zero Bourbon Trail in Mount Erie. Uh, this one was submitted on November the eighth and in the amount of two thousand dollars. Once again, the estimated land value of the parcel is eleven thousand four hundred. And as we did last time, you would need to take a motion either way, either to accept or to not deny it.
I'll make the motion to deny that bid.
I'll second that.
Have a motion, Commissioner Goins, to deny the bid for Bourbon Trail. Second, Commissioner Johnson, any discussion? All those in favor, aye? Opposed? The ayes have it.
Next item is from Jessica Montgomery, and she is here. Uh normally, the landfill allows NC DOT to dispose um of roadside debris at the landfill at no cost. That's something we've done for a very long time. However, currently, they are in possession of an abandoned camper, which was left on a local roadside. It's sitting on their property in Elkin. They plan to demolish it and would like to deposit it in the landfill. This is a much larger item than we've ever taken before, so she was looking for some feedback from the board on whether or not it needed to fall under the courtesy that we've provided for a number of years, or do we need to consider tipping fees?
Herefore, have we allowed the DOT, did you say, to do that?
Yes, usually it's much smaller quantity.
All her stuff.
A little crush up to a pretty small chunk, wasn't it, Jessica? Or you buried, I bet you couldn't put it in a in in too many.
It'll it'll be by weight. So I don't know how big this camper is. They didn't tell me that, but I just don't want to, you know, set a precedence that anything on the side of the road can be thrown away without you all knowing about it. And this, to me, was a different situation than a dead deer or something that blew off the back of a truck. This is an abandoned camper. Um, so that it won't take up too much space, especially if they try to get some of the metal off, and that would be something I would recommend to them, anything that could be recycled. Anything that could be recycled, I would request that they would pull that off um and then demolish the the camper, and it will, it'll go. You would be able to probably fit it here.
I'll make a motion that we uh we allow them to take anything that's not recyclable to uh to the landfill. Anything that is, that recycles.
And waive the fee like normal. Okay.
Um, I have a motion, Commissioner Goins, to um allow the DOT to bring anything? Is that my? Just a particular case? Just so it's case-specific on this one time? Okay, all right, good. Have a second?
I'll second that, and I think it ought to be case by case. I mean, I'd I'd rather have it in the landfill on the side of the road. Uh, but if they start bringing us a hundred a week, we're gonna have to revisit it one case at a time.
Yeah, or Keith will have somebody move in them or something.
Oh, R B and B's all.
Okay, Second Commissioner Tucker. David can go put in a septic tank for them. All those in favor, aye? Opposed? The ayes have it.
Uh, next item is a memo from the uh Finance Officer Laura Neely related to the Health Department renovation. Uh during construction by quorum at the Health Department, um there've been a number of change orders that had to have been implemented. And they basically revolve around unknown issues exposed by the demolition that took place earlier uh in the project. Um, items that changed due to specification edits during construction and then a couple of interior finishing upgrades requested by the Health Director. Um, so you can see there in the in the change orders revolve around data cabling, glazing revisions, millwork, mold bulkheads, plumbing fixtures, as well as an uh um area in the WIC portion of the Health Department, some HVAC modifications, and some changes in the type of exam room cabinets. And then finally, a sink. And the biggest change request by Health was related to um putting LVT in in lieu of carpet in certain areas. A total of all change orders is eighty-two thousand seventy-six dollars. Uh, within the budget that was approved by the board, there is a hundred thousand dollars in the contingency line, which is where these would, uh, once approved, would would come from. And I think Tony's here if you have any specific questions about these, but these will be required to be voted on by the board.
Commissioner Johnson?
I have to admit, I got a few questions here. But uh but uh most of it's fine, and I'm sure it's all needed, but I just, I guess I'm just getting too old and seeing now, some of these prices for sinks such as seem just completely outrageous. Don't you want to come up and dress us a little bit on it? Okay, well, it it came from, uh, I guess, the subs that are working, are already working there. Is that a correct statement?
That is correct.
Well, my question would be, Mr. Chairman, is the the they just subject to, we need them, you get them, bring them in, or do we do do we go out, does somebody research and get the what's needed, what's the best deal, or the best quantum, uh, you know, whatever? I ain't saying the cheapest is the best. I'm not saying that, but the but, I mean, how does it, how does it work?
Well, it it varies depending on the circumstance. If you're dealing with um the mold situation, then the obvious choice is to stay with the uh metal stud and gypsum contractor to replace that gypsum. Um, on another matter, um, the signage, which is another uh an allowance section, it's not on this agenda. Uh Denise Brown is working with myself to find competitive pricing so that we bring that to the board. So it's a, it's a variety.
Well, I I I would be, there's no identification of what it is, just like a New Bradley Wash Basin lavatory.
Okay.
Can you tell me what 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 is that?
I can't. Um, the actual sink itself is the same thing that's in, forgive me for the terminology, for the building that has the uh Tax Office Service Center, the main restroom when you first come in, the long trough sink. That's that particular sink. What, how this has evolved, um, that particular bathroom was not originally planned to be renovated to try to control budget. And then the fact that the project is within the the budget that we we guessed at two point two and we were below that. Um, original plans was to do cosmetic change, to paint and to put tile in. In order to put the tile in, you need to take the toilet partitions out and remove the old tile that was found after the during the bidding process that it was best to do it that way. And once you take the fixtures up, take the countertop off in order to repair the tile, then you're faced with, do I go back with the same laminate top drop-in sink? Or this particular sink? And the pricing was not much different. So that's how it, part of the evolution of that. You get an upgrade, the com- the comparative price would have been very similar, very close to it.
You did, Bradley Wash Basin.
Mm-hmm.
A sink that costs eight thousand seven hundred and thirty-four dollars.
Ten foot long.
Wow.
Yeah, installed.
That that's what I'm talking.
And you're saying that, that's what we're talking about, that's what we have down here in uh in our tax office and everything when we go to that maintenance bathroom.
That way, you're you are compatible with the other type of facility that you have.
That's what it costs, is made out of granite, Commissioner Johnson.
I bet it'd be way too much, wouldn't it, Larry?
In this case, yeah. Uh, but I I just, I mean, is, so that's our purpose? Do we have another choice? Can't we just put in the uh just three sinks?
Yeah, you could do three wall-hung sinks. Probably fixture pricing by plumbing today is probably fifteen hundred dollars a piece installed. Um, just by plumbing fixture rates, so that's forty-five hundred dollars.
Fixer rates and.
Yeah.
But I I know under counter sinks for a van in a bathroom don't cost
Hmm.
Uh nothing like this.
Agreed.
Anyway, okay, I didn't, well, I didn't even know what this ten-foot lavatory thing you're talking about.
Yes.
Um.
So there could be a cheaper.
I'm not gonna jack to the change orders, Mr. Chairman. I just thought, I just needed a few questions answered. Uh, it just seemed, golly.
I feel your pain, brother.
Yeah, right.
Uh, everything has just gone up. It's just like I said, nobody forward nothing.
Well, I'll ask another question. I I assume this has been brought to the property committee, these change orders?
We 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 discussed it, yeah.
Okay.
To be honest, I didn't specifically discuss that one item, but we did.
Right.
We did, you know, we felt like we kinda, I mean, what do you do?
Well, I I feel the same way, but okay, I just wanted to.
And some of it, and it's like Tony was saying, some of it is inherent in renovations. You do one thing and something else happens and it leads to another thing, and you've got different options and it's a little bit, when you, uh, you know, it's a little different in new construction, but anyway, all right. Um, am I looking for a motion here, brother?
I I'll make that. Y'all have already discussed it and had the same questions, I'm sure.
Commissioner Goins, um.
That we approve the change orders.
Okay, Larry's made the motion. Do I have a second? Uh, Second Commissioner Goins, any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Tony.
Next item is, uh, I guess informational um for the board. Um, something Commissioner Chairman Harris had requested I bring up, and rightfully so. The uh House Bill two fifty-nine, which was the budget bill, passed uh just, I guess, a couple of months ago at the state level, had a prohibition on uh regional transportation authorities from levying short-term car rental tax in a county that has withdrawn from the authority. Specific language uh within that section of uh House Bill two fifty-nine states, "The board trustees of a regional transportation authority created under Article twenty-seven of Chapter one sixty-eight of the General Statutes may not levy a tax in a special tax district created under the subsection of this section that consists solely of a county that has withdrawn from the county authority." And then the next uh section states, "This only applies to Surrey County." So this language, I think, assists the county in its final move to separate itself from part, not just in membership, but also in taxation. This was to take effect on November the first. Also provided for each of you, so you could see uh for yourselves, there's a, there's this attachment. These are the letters that would go out monthly for short-term car rentals, and as you can see in the second one, the language related to the part fee is no longer there. And Penny provided that for you. Um, I I didn't get it in time to put it in your packets, but I want to make sure you had it this evening. Um, and I know Ed has uh may want to comment on some correspondence he's had recently.
Yeah, I I was in touch with Tom Terrill, who's parts attorney, let him know uh about the change in legislation. I'm sure he was already aware of that. And uh after talking to Laura, indicated to Tom that we were still in the process of collecting uh taxes on rental cars for September and October, and that we would continue to remit those funds to part, but that that process would cease on November first. And I have not heard back from him. But, I mean, there's really nothing you can say.
Long haul.
After reading that verbiage in the new language specifically for Surrey County, I mean, that that it's, in your opinion, it's a done deal, it's over?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right. Did we get to kids? And the divorce?
I get it.
Yeah, so we got. All right, well, sounds good to me.
Boy.
All right, next item is a request from the City of Mount Erie. As you know, you have a copy of the letter request in your packet. Uh, they are seeking uh the county to participate uh with a local contribution towards a one-point-five million dollar grant they are seeking from Golden Leaf to create a site-ready or shovel-ready project in the Westwood Industrial Park. I I take it it'll be on the one-hundred-acre tract that still remains there. This would, this grant they're applying for would assist with clearing and grading and would make it more attractive, according to the city, for uh future uh business or um whether it's new business or an existing business to expand. They are specifically asking for Surrey County, the total project cost, as you say, is one-point-nine million, one-point-five, and the grant, they would ask the county split with them fifty-fifty, the remaining four hundred thousand, which would make the county's contribution two hundred thousand towards the project. And that's the uh that is basically the the request in a nutshell.
What's the timeline on this time, this grant application?
Can I, can I share more information?
Yes.
Uh, I was at their their meeting that they uh informed uh the town manager Darren Lewis, I brought it up, that they uh have asked Golden Leaf, and Golden Leaf will respond by the first week in December if they get a grant or not, that uh one and a half million dollars. Uh Darren has also stated that they've already done some homework and they're estimating that the the to get the property, everything I want done to the property, ready to build on, would cost about one-point-nine. That is an estimate. Uh, but in order to get the grant, uh Ma- uh Mount Erie Commissioners, they have to decide if they want to take on the additional amount. And so they did, and that's the only action that has taken place. Uh, they they said they would have, they would take on, and so after the fact, uh, they felt like it would uh be a, uh, the county would be a good partner with them on that extra amount for an economic development uh project. I think he also states in this letter that we do not have to make a call tonight. Uh, uh, it could be discussed later, uh, because they've committed, they've committed to it. And so they're just asking us for for help. Uh, I would like to, as representing Mount Erie, I'd I'd like, I'd like to, uh, they've committed to it and and it's very valuable. they've committed to it and, and it's very valuable, e- even to Surrey County. Uh, what a great booster it would be, but I, I don't feel like we have to say we're going to give you two hundred thousand dollars tonight.
Or for that matter, I imagine they take what they could get.
Well, that's, that's, this is just a request. Uh, they wanted to go ahead and get it on board. And it's a request. Uh, they, uh, they've, they have, uh, they actually got a lot of things going on, uh, on that. So, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to suggest that we've heard the request, but I, I, I'm going to say I don't think we need to take action in any fashion tonight. But that's the story of what they've committed to, Manary Commissioners have. They've committed to it.
Uh, it might, could, could we just maybe, and say to them, do a, maybe come to us and do a little presentation? What this is going to look like?
Well, it's right now, it's the if.
That's what I'm saying. If, if they were to get it, to come and, and do a.
I, I would, I would like that, Commissioner Goins, I would, if the chairman would go along, let it for something later.
If it were to come to.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Goins. You good, Mark?
Good.
Tuck?
Good.
All right. General County business, uh, Commissioner Marion, I'll start with you. Or Chris, did you?
I just want to mention, I know in your packets, there was a second item in addition to your packet, uh, your board packet for tonight. And that is the, uh, Davie Surrey Yadkin County's Regional Comprehensive Transportation Plan. That's a mouthful, the CTP. The board, this board will be holding a public hearing on December fourth to solicit public comment on the plan. It's important that you take some time to look through it. And I would also encourage the public to do so because it will be a guide for NC DOT for the next twenty-five or thirty years on transportation decisions. Every, uh, municipality in each of the three counties that are covered with this plan have to adopt it at some point. Um, I believe they've worked through all municipalities in the three counties. Now they're coming for the, the three counties themselves. So I just want to make sure that you're aware of why that was in your packet. And I was also encouraged the public, if you can access the plan on the county website.
Okay. All righty. I'll start with you, Commissioner Marion. Do you have anything for General?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank everybody for coming out and I'd like to thank all of the employees of, uh, Surrey County and the jobs you do. Not always easy. But, uh, we work, we, we all strive to make Surrey County a better place. We're not always right and we admit that. But, uh, we try to do the best we can for, for the citizen. And, uh, other than that, I'd just like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
All right. Commissioner Goins, you have anything?
Thanksgiving to everybody.
All righty, Tuck.
Appreciate you all coming and participating and happy Thanksgiving.
Commissioner Johnson.
Uh, I was able to attend a Veterans Day celebration at Manary, uh, last Saturday morning. Uh, it was very nice and they even had a big holiday thing, uh, after the afternoon was dedicated at, at the Veterans Park. And they had the actual army band there for a couple of hours. I, I had to, had to listen to them some. It was very, very good. So thankful that our, that we honor our veterans on a certain day. But, uh, just like I said in my prayer, we need to, hope we can just, we need to count our blessings every day. And I'm blessed to live in Surrey County, Mr. Chairman.
All righty. Thank you very much. I don't have anything. Looking for a motion to go into closed session?
Motion.
Motion Commissioner Tucker, Second Commissioner Marion, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye? Opposed? We are going into closed session. Thank you.
Looking for motion adjourned. Motion, Mr. Tucker. Second, Mr. Goins. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.